Thank you. Just as a heads up, does everyone, is anyone else, does everyone else's mic muted? Red? Because I'm getting feedback. Okay? So. I think it's coming out of speakers. So everyone turn your volume off on your. Yeah, make sure the volume's off on your computer, too. We'll move into an adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to accept the agenda? Director Courtney, is there a second? Is there a second? Seconded Vice President McVeigh, all in favor? Okay, next item is the consent agenda.
Yeah, he put something, he should push speaker here or something.
Yeah. Is there a motion for the consent agenda? Director Holden.
I move to approve the consent agenda, including payment of bills previously paid in the amount of $667,884.88. Unpaid bills in the amount of $96,804.15. P. card purchases BMO Harris Bank in the amount of $18,279.63. And gifts in the amount of $10,303.55 for this board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Director Hatterburg, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. It's a great pleasure I have for the next item on the agenda is to introduce our new student representative. So I'd like to introduce Jaya Kent, Jaya Kent, I'm sorry. Jaya is a junior at BHS, phenomenal student, really high grade point, already has a ton of hours after even just the first quarter of the junior year. Star volleyball player, phenomenal band player in all different kinds of band, ecology club, and just talking with her is hoping to, at one point, be staring in all of our mouths and as a dental hygienist. And so good luck on that, that's not what I'd want, but I please tell us something about yourself, just as an introduction, and then a little bit from your student report.
I wanted to first off start by saying that I was really honored to be picked to be a student representative. I hope that by the end of this meeting and by the end of my report that the teachers and the students will trust me enough to give you guys an accurate and clear representation of what it's like to go to BHS, especially during a global pandemic. I wanted to share a little bit about myself so you guys get to know me better. My parents are split, so they split at a really young age, so for me it was really hard, so I joined sports and did a lot of activities so I can pull them back together and just have them in the same environment with me and spend time with them. I joined the varsity volleyball team this year as a junior, so it was really big for me and a really big accomplishment because I used to be really bad at sports. I used to be terrible. This year the junior varsity was conference champions and our varsity had a winning season, but was only one win away from going to state, which hasn't been happened, hasn't happened, I don't think ever. So that was really big. To pass the time away after school volleyball season, I play travel season to keep myself in shape. I'm involved in path, I did the fourth year and I'm part of the college club. I also do concert in Jasmine and Mark again, which I've been playing since fifth grade and have been taking private lessons from Mr. Derek Murphy for as long as I can remember. During the year, I compete with all over Iowa, bands, contests, and Mr. Murphy also gave me the opportunity to play in a school band, which is an old, more advanced band. It was really fun to do over the summer, get the experience. Since I've been playing for the BHS band, I compete with seniors and people above me. I've been competing with them since a freshman to earn my spot as section leader. So my job is just to make sure everyone has what they need to be successful for the upcoming concerts and of course, keep Murphy happy. After high school, I hope to go to Kirkwood Community College because my, my parents both met there and participate in their dental hygiene program and play for the Kirkwood Eagles on the volleyball team. After two years, I hope to go further, maybe to get my bachelor's at the University of Iowa. By doing this, I would have more options in the future to move up in the dental field if I would choose to do that. Might sound weird, but I've always been interested in biology and learning how things work and looking at my own teeth to make them look as good as possible. I've never had bruises on my teeth, so my journey might have went a little bit less expensive than others. But I think it's really fun just putting effort into it. I believe that someone else's. Oh goodness. I believe that I can take anything that's beaten and bruised and turn it into something new and exciting to look at. I've asked to make, I was asked to make a report this week throughout school and how it went. It was our first week back from Christmas break and some of us didn't get to see our families or friends like we normally would in the past years. Some of us had homework that we were supposed to be, over the week that was supposed to be stress-free. Personally, I was ready to get back to interaction I had with my teachers and fellow students. Diving into the routine, it was kind of stressful, I know, for the junior class, had a test we needed to retake after two weeks of not practicing. Tests coming up that weren't working for four and passed new assignments that we're about to give into the grade book. This was expected for the first week back. So I thought anything happens well, the girls' junior varsity basketball team won their first game since I think like 2018, so they were really happy. And hopefully it gave the girls they pushed and needed to go for conference champions. We had quite a few sleepings coming up for the boards, including senior night on Thursday night at 6:00 PM, so they're all really excited. And even though it's hard, we hope that things next week should be better. I'm really excited to be here and give this perspective. It's really cool to think about how and what I say really matters here. I had a lot to say and I hope to touch on all these topics throughout the following meetings. If you guys have any concerns or concerns, or I just say something doesn't make sense, feel free to tell me and let me know. Thanks.
Thank you. Any, any questions? Yeah, welcome. Thank you very much for your report, that was a great bio and I know you have some people watching tonight, so we're very, very proud of you, so thank you. Speaking of people watching tonight, Mr. Cohen. I'm sure you have everyone watching tonight as well?
I do. All my children have moved away, maybe my wife's watching. I'm sure my mom is. The first item on my board report will be, it's part of the agenda, so I won't discuss that at this time. Board President Siren and I met December 22nd and discussed district operations. President Siren explained he wanted to build a collective buy-in through implementation of additional committee work. You will begin to see a slot on the tentative agenda after the superintendent report entitled Committee Reports. President Siren's intention is to enrich the process being assigned to committees and to build leadership potential. These committee meetings involve board members. The inaugural meeting is going to be covered tonight with the leader and me, with members from the curriculum committee and an extended team identified by Mrs. Butler. This will be something that we move toward as an action that will, it could be an actionable item, it may not be an actual item, so it will vary, so you will see differentiation in the agenda. The Boys High School Athletic Association does not have jurisdiction over junior high baseball, thus junior high baseball is a unsanctioned sport. We are now members of the Southeast Conference, the Southeast Conference does play junior high baseball. Again, it is not a sanctioned sport by the Iowa High School Athletic Association. However, the ADs in the conference do help schedule games, the teams do use buses and they do play on school-owned fields. This is a great opportunity to give our kids a chance to get more reps in, play more games, and learn to love the game of baseball. So I am very excited we have somebody move in, or move up and said they're willing to step up and do this. Once COVID's over, we get back to normal, we will go back to Mr. Huff giving a brief at the end of spring sports and beginning of summer, the end of summer, the beginning of fall, beginning of the fall, end of the fall and beginning of the winter. So there's always, you receive four briefs a year from the athletic director. The next item is also on the agenda, so we will discuss it then. Thank you for reading the entirety of the packet I dropped off at your house. I find the work that Greg is conducting with Becker and Associates exciting and being able to keep our employees' health costs down, health insurance. Thank you for reading Mr. Johnson's cabinet note. Cassidy, the county attendance meeting scheduled with Greater Burlington Partnership. We're excited to work with the Greater Burlington Partnership and Des Moines County Supervisors in an effort to best serve the children that come to our school and their families. We completed a transfer of responsibility. I am no longer working on the HR, with, working on the, the benefits for administrators and the annual review that is now with Mrs. Johnson and the policy committee. I completed the process with the Iowa Department of Education to streamline joint operations by effectively sharing data. President Siren McVeigh and Vice President McVeigh and I and Greg met and completed our pre-board meeting discussions. The LMC held a meeting, we talked about the following items. The calendar, certified staff, educational attainment, compensation, lane change, Burlington's efforts to help Southeast Iowa obtain a regional virtual academy. And we also talked about how the new government COVID relief plan has affected the leave that our employees must take. Simply put, there are no more 14 days of paid COVID sickness. The person must use their sick days or their family's sick days. Thank you for going through the best-wind link that I mentioned in my board report and familiarizing yourself with that, I appreciate it. The finance committee will talk a little bit tonight about the James Madison property, so I won't go into that. And that completes my board report, barring any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Cohen? Seeing none, we will move into committee reports. As Mr. Cohen said, we're going to start using the committees more. Want to make a plea to people in the community, people you may know who, who are interested, that we can get involved in committees. Not everyone wants to jump on and take an elected position of a full board position, but a lot of people may want to help out on, on one committee that meets once every six months, depends on what action is needed. Just as a reminder, we have seven committees. The Curriculum Committee, the Policy Committee, the Transportation Committee, the Facilities Committee, Business/Finance, Human Resources/Legislature, and School/Community Relations. So again, I encourage, as those of us on the board know people who may be interested, encourage them to, to contact Mr. Cohen or myself and we can get them in on a committee. Anyone in the community listening, again, these are going to be great ways to, to just dip your toe in and help out the school at a different level than, than may be normally available to you. So with that, we will start with our first committee report tonight, and this is the Curriculum Committee discussing Leader and Me. And after watching a YouTube video, Mr. Kratic, I'm glad they didn't trust you with a Chromebook.
Good call.
Well, mine, you can have mine, too.
It's not wireless, but it's got a little bit of a cord if you walk.
For those of you who didn't see it, there is a video from the Aldo staff of how not to treat your Chromebook. They dropped one down a flight of stairs, dropped one, hit one with a baseball bat, dropped one off the building, ran over with a car. So it was just a humorous way to show the fifth and sixth graders, you know, don't walk with your laptop, drop it. It was well done.
I just want a baseball bat for a long time.
All right, so thank you guys for having us here to talk a little bit tonight about.
Can you share your screen?
Should be present now, I think.
All right, so I'm going to go in, I'm going to go in, sorry. So we're going to talk about something called Leader and Me. And. And what is Leader and Me is a program that we've been looking at from five to 12 buildings in order to address 21st century skills, more specifically 21st century employability skills. So the Iowa Core Program has 21st century skills and you can see them on the screen, they're about community engagement, adaptive labor learners, so students can learn how to play, reflect, and lead up to problem-solving together as a team. Adapting their resource responsibilities within that team. Using the interpersonal skills, the discipline guide when towards a goal, to demonstrate initiative and self-direction through high achievement. And then to demonstrate connectivity and accountability in the higher expectancy. So we did the standard for the state of Iowa, given us our 21st century, particularly employability skills. And administrators at the Des Moines building have had discussions over the last couple of years about the challenge we've had to find a consistent way to really build capacity from fifth grade on through 12th grade in these areas. And Leader and Me has shown itself to be something that meets that need for all of us as far as making sure kiddos start in, starting in fifth grade, begin working towards these, these end goals. So Leader and Me helps develop a culture in your building. It's more than just skills, it's about building and putting in place into your building a culture of leadership. So all students have the ability to become leaders, all students have strengths that they can, they can leverage in a positive way. All the things that Leader and Me can help develop in our culture is simple thinking skills, creativity, a lot of self-discipline. There's a lot in Leader and Me and the seven habits about students being responsible for self and having self-control and really thinking before they make choices and before they act. Relationship building, goal-setting, just a plethora of, of social competence that aren't necessarily addressed in ways in different classes. So this is something that we've all kind of agreed would be a benefit. Mr. Kratic, you want to talk a little bit about the seven habits?
I do. So in, Leader and Me is really kind of an offshoot of The Seven Habits of Highly Effective People, the book that came out, I believe in the eighties. And so the Leader and Me has really developed from that, using those seven habits. And the really, Mrs. Butler referenced, you know, anybody can be a leader and it really starts with those first three habits, leading yourself. And so those first three habits really focus on, on that, being proactive, beginning with the end in mind and putting first things first. So helping students and side note here, what we've kind of learned in, in going through this process with the Leader and Me people and doing research is how much of an impact that the seven habits and the training itself for Leader and Me, the impact that it's had on the adults in the buildings, not just the students. Because these are, these are habits for everyone to work towards, not just our students. So focusing on those, those three to start with, that really, building those good habits to put, for a student to put themselves into a good place to move forward. And then moving forward from there, kind of more outward focused, the, the rest of the habits are think when, when, seek first, understand, and then to be understood, synergize, and then sharpen the saw. So the leading others, those three habits are how we collaborate, how we cooperate with other people, how we work towards the best situation possible, whatever the case is, wherever we are, whatever we're doing, whether it's in a school setting or whether it's as we move forward in, in the workforce. And then the seventh habit, teaching students and teaching staff how to sharpen the saw, to renew ourselves, to, to maintain healthiness in our body, in our heart, in our spirits, and our minds. So we're really, really excited about this. We have, this is going to be really something that we can build on from the five, six building, and it just continues to capitalize as the students get older. So it's not going to be just the same thing regurgitated over and over. It builds and builds and builds. And so you see here students in that intermediate building, in the five, six classrooms, during our hound time, which is really our social emotional time that we have set aside for our students to build these skills. This is where they'll become familiar, learn a lot of vocabulary, and as Mrs. Butler said, this becomes the culture of not just the classroom, but the hallways, the building, and ultimately all three buildings. So I'm super excited and I know everybody else is, too. It's just going to be something that's, that's really, really good for our kids.
And I think that the language piece that they learn at the intermediate will carry on into the middle school where they then, excuse me, apply what they've learned within the school setting each day, and then that carries on then to the high school, where then they can look at applying that both within the school, but then also in the community. And I know Dave wanted to talk a little bit about the community aspect of this.
So I could have Ms. Kent to talk a little bit about this concept. Let me put it in later, move to the trimester in the transition class. We started working with the seven habits of highly effective teens and we saw much better work patterns in terms of our students, people up in ninth grade, success rates had greatly improved previous board presentations, showing you the data on there. But we are also responding somewhat to our local business partners because they want to see us starting to establish some of these habits at a much lower level. They feel that these are essential for students to be successful in the workplace. And with the current system, as we move into their junior, senior year, there will be some time obviously available for a lot of our kids for job shadowing, internships, things like that. One of the emphasis that we want to have is that it's great to know a lot of things, but at the same time, these other skills, these soft skills, these employability skills are essential. And so some of the benefits that we highlighted for our business partners that we've had conversations with, we actually met with the leadership of Greater Burlington Partnership because we want them to come on board and help us establish this culture, come in and reinforce the importance of these employability skills. And so again, we see that yes, we want to acquire the academic knowledge and skills with some of these essential skills and concepts, learning the leader and me, their executive functions, so they're about how do I organize myself so that I am productive in my learning? But then they also apply then out to the workplace. And so at the high school, we are actually moving towards having a report part where we will report out not only the students on their academic grades, but also we will be giving them feedback and reporting out on their employability skills. And Greater Burlington Partnership has committed to helping, helping us use their resources, help us select the appropriate employability skills that have been taught in many months, and then a student will actually leave Burlington Community School District with a transcript that not only does it represent their academic learning, but it will also represent their employability skills and some of the things that they've demonstrated there. Because we know not all kids are going to go onto a post-secondary formal education, some of them are going to need to get their, their post-secondary training in apprenticeship programs or community college or athlete, right in the workplace. And so again, we know these things are essential, we spend time on them. It's extremely exciting with Ms. Butler and Mr. Kratic, our attention to some of the things that have gone through the last 40 years at BHS and to have it re-formalized, follow curriculum that starts with students at fifth grade and runs all the way through their senior year, is going to be extremely beneficial not only to our students, but to the economic development of the entire region. So I know there are some other school districts that are currently also looking at this, we will to possibly partner with them as well and make a regional movement, so kind of where we're headed.
I have a question and I see the invoice here. What, I guess the question is what are we paying for outside of a lot of copies of the book?
So I can tell you this, kind of, you know, two and a half years ago, 34, three years ago, we kind of dove into this and did some exploration and kind of came to the conclusion that, hey, we, let's try it on our own. It failed miserably. We really had no traction to go anywhere. And so in looking at the research, yeah, there's some sticker shock there, but what it gives is a whole lot of the in-person training upfront and support for two years, those two years, that really puts the district in the place that as new people come on board, we're at the point where after those two years, we're ready to support any new people that come in. And so it's an ongoing, sustainable program because of that initial support for those two years.
And there is a well-prepared curriculum that greatly answers a lot of what's offered for students.
If I can, real quick on that one. One of the things that we looked at, or I looked at, is the, you know, kind of cost per student, and the cost per student on this would be very comparable to what we would pay for any of our other curriculum materials for a, for a subject area, especially a core subject area. And as I think it was Mrs. Butler's part of the presentation, the social emotional learning standards are now part of the required Iowa Core Curriculum. Iowa Core Curriculum. So there is, it is a price tag, but you also have to also keep in mind that we're talking about half of our student body in this price tag, because we're covering grades five through 12. It's part of the required curriculum. And when you figure it out as a cost per pupil, it's very comparable to other programs we purchase.
Also, a part of that, a part of that cost is there are actually many people on staff to be trainers. So there's going to be people in which are able to train and they're able to sustain. So that's pretty exciting for us to have.
And how long can training continue? Or, just try to mention that I want to clarify. Once people are trained, they'll be in charge of training people that come after them. So one of you leaves the district, there's enough training there built in?
Yes, yes. And as Mr. Kratic said, we did try this for a good part of two years on our own without purchasing, and it just, it never got to where we needed it to be. This isn't a class, this is a culture change. And the fact that we have a culture change from five through 12 that's consistent is huge and super exciting. So I think that's the difference that we're seeing.
Question. How is this integrated into the regular curriculum?
I think a huge part is that common language that just becomes pervasive throughout this school day. So it's not just during a lesson that students hear this, it becomes a part of everything that's done. So, you know, for instance, it may be if a student, if they're working on a science experiment or something, the teacher may talk about, how are we going to be proactive and how we do this? So we're not going to just sit back and let something happen, or what do we need to do? What are the steps that we need to do to be proactive, to make, to find success in what we do?
Also, is this something that students can opt in and out of?
No, it would be school-wide.
Okay, good.
So you're saying that all teachers will be trained then, so they all are familiar with the language and can do?
That's that huge culture piece, that it just?
It has to be everybody buys in, right?
It becomes who we are, what we are.
And so have we committed to a certain amount of time for this program so we can see if it is beneficial? Or are we going to do kind of what we've done sometimes in the past, and we start something and in a couple of years, we change to something else? What do you think?
Forever.
Well, you know, you can't say.
No, I know.
But you can say a certain, like you can say, we're going to, we're going to commit to this for five years, or we're going to commit to this for, I mean, I've seen so many programs come and go over my 38 years in the district, that, you know, we're working, or I thought they were working, and then suddenly we're doing something else.
This has been an integral part of our push at the high school for the last 40 years.
Well, good.
So we use this in transition class. And we, I can show you evidence, like we brought the, Mr. Rell, brought in, and we showed you the number of failures that we had, and the huge reduction in the number of failures that we've had. You can walk around the building, and it's part of our culture, because like in all of our ninth grade rooms, we have all of the seven habits posted up on the wall. So this is something that's perpetuating. But I think the strength of this, in terms of contracting with them, is the fact that we built capacity to train anyone that comes in. So that's where a lot of initiatives are centered a long time too, and we're not getting close to the end. That's where a lot of this thing's at. They are ones that we train people, but we don't train them to the level that they can go ahead and bring our new people up to speed when we walk into the classroom. The other thing that I think will help with this whole push is that we have reached out to our business partners, and they're committed to the fact that, look, you guys have to do something with this. You know, we know you try to complete, there needs to be some type of a formal training involved, it needs to be systemic, and not to be in a specific class, things like that as well. Again, I'm very excited. I've used the seven habits of highly effective teens, so that became a principal, we've had 130 classes in this school I've entered, and I'm seeing the impact of it. And for us to go in and start having these conversations at the lower level, this allows us at the high school level to discuss so much further. So I believe, I would answer for number one as Mr. Kratic. And if you give any of this stuff, it is consequence.
A lot of it's consequence.
But the stuff has gotten better, but the curriculum that they provide us and the training support that they provide us to make sure that that strand runs and is viral, becomes viral.
But to teach those skills is kind of difficult, because it's not exact. It's not like math, where you're going to learn how to add. It's harder to teach this. Why I was curious about the curriculum, and you've told us that there is a curriculum that goes with it. So there are definitely activities then that stress certain of these skills, right? And you've done it for four years, so you already know it's been successful. So it is forever then, Mr. Kratic?
Excellent. And I will say that, you know, even though in the preceding couple of years where we have struggled to do anything with it, it has not taken away our desire to use the material. It's that good. And I have had conversations with my staff, and they are super excited about the possibility of really diving into this with.
I think it's very important that the staff buys in. As you know, if they're not doing it, it kind of falls apart in some places. So hopefully, the staff is on board.
I don't have a microphone, so I hope I'm loud enough here. But my question is, when are you planning on starting this? Is this a, we're starting in third quarter, second trimester?
We had talked to the leadership trainers, and we're looking at training of the trainers this summer, so that we could start teachers pre-service before school starts next year, with hopes of starting with students next school year. I mean, like I said, we're excited about this. We want to start now. So we want to, certainly as we can, we want to be thoughtful about how we're doing this and how we're implementing. But this is good stuff, and we've got excited people at all three buildings. So ready to, ready to get rolling on it.
It sounds out there. I think the training is the key. When we look at this rather large strike bag, you have to be unified in this message. And that training is going to give us the unity in order to make this program successful. So I have no problem with the price tag on it. I think this is going to help within, I would say, five years, our city and our county, I think we're going to start to see a turnaround. People stay here as a business owner. So I think it's great of you for putting in the time and effort and getting this presentation together and being willing to start training the trainers and start training the teachers. I think this is exciting for our school districts. So thank you. That is all I have.
Any other questions? We will wait until New Business in Essence to have a motion. But while we have here, while we have the presentation up, is there any other questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll, I'll forego the joint committee meeting regarding F and M until the item is on the agenda later. With that, I don't believe there's any other committee reports. So we will go into items for discussion. The first one is Board Policy 711.13, School Transportation Safety Instruction, a second reading. Is there a motion?
Good evening.
Or Lacy, I guess. Yes, turn it over to you here.
Good evening. We do have the second reading of 71113. This policy, if you will remember, was updated to reflect the changes in the Iowa Administrative Code, which now mandates that school bus safety training will occur, and then how long that documentation will be stored. And so the recommended action is to approve the second reading as presented.
Is there a motion?
I'm.
So move. Director Courtney, is there a second?
Second.
Director Haddelberg, any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next is Board Policy 711.14, School Bus Passenger Restraints, second reading. Mrs. Johnson?
Yep, a new policy that was created, again, in response to the Iowa Administrative Code that now requires districts to purchase school buses with the three-point lap belt, shoulder belt on all new buses that are purchased. And the change also required that districts have this policy in place, requiring the use of those belts when they are provided in the buses. So the recommended action would be to approve the second reading of Board Policy 71114.
Thank you. Is there a motion? I think Director Haddelberg got in on the second. Second, Director Courtney, any discussion?
Yes. Jonathan, you know, this is just on the side, but you know, our only number, oh, now, that's, that's hard for me to have.
Yes.
You know, you're, 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 you're,[1322.13]
Well, I know that's kind of a drastic thing. I just, I'm, I'm really excited about this, as I said at the last meeting, because I've seen the films for years of kids rolling around those buses like, just all around like rubber balls bouncing around in a cage. And I just think it's great that we're doing this. I know it's expensive, but this thing's great, and I think, I think we're going to wind up saving lives over this, and I'm really happy to vote for this tonight. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. All in favor of Board Policy 711 dot fourteen?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next is the Pieces Memorandum of Agreement for a Local Evaluator. Corey or Cassie?
Yes, on your packet, you have a contract with our new local evaluator for the Pieces Program. The local evaluator is a position that's required under the Twenty First Century Community Learning Centers grant, which is what funds our Pieces After School programs. So this is just a contract, because we have a new evaluator for that position, and Cassie is also online, if you have any questions additional to that.
Any questions first, or is someone ready to make a motion?
I move, we accept the Pieces Memorandum of Agreement as presented.
Is there a second? Second, Courtney. Motion, Director Holson. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor of the Pieces?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next is the Leader in Me Membership Agreement. We've heard a report in the committee meetings, so we'll go right to a motion. Is there a motion to accept the Leader in Me Membership Agreement?
I have a motion.
We'll go with Vice President McVeigh. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Director Vikström. Any further discussion from earlier?
I would just like to say that I echo Mrs. Holson's comments, that I think we need to have a commitment for a number of years to make it successful, because I too have seen a lot of these things come and go. And we also have to have buy-in from the staff and from the kids. So those are really two important ingredients, and I'm hoping, it sounds like a great program, I'm hoping that we can give it a chance to make a difference for us.
And it was, and it was exactly, and we always, we always start good, we get it going, then all of a sudden, we get this, we get that, all sorts of ways, it doesn't happen that way. It sounds like something I, I agree with. We're really, we have another group, and we're hoping for, say, look, with this, it's a good program. Not a.
No, and I think that's a, yeah. Director Courtney, I think that's an excellent point, and one I wanted to make, for, it's up to us to make sure this continues as a board, but it's up to the principals using it to relay to us all of those successes. And so I'm excited for a year from now, through the Curriculum Committee, to pass on the successes, to continue hearing about it, some of the data you're going to be adding to the report cards. I mean, those are the things that are going to embed it to us as a board, that even some of us leave the board and new people come on, that this just becomes a standard at our level as well. Yes, Director?
Being an old grizzled, longtime board member, I can remember when we were playing Flavor of the Month. Now, this was in past leadership in here, and the only way this is going to go is the buy-in, and people know that it is not Flavor of the Month, which we wasted time and effort on it in years past. So I like this program, I love this, I think this can do so many things, but you're right, you need the buy-in. You need the buy-in, you need the support.
I think one way that we can maintain the buy-in and maintain the support is, once this program gets started, is have a bi-monthly update. This is, this is where we're at with the program, you know, keep it fresh in our memory in our minds, and letting the community know how this is working, because it's not only going to be a buy-in for our district, our staff and students, it's going to be a buy-in for the community. And I think with the Greater Burlington partnership, their involvement is going to be a key involvement in keeping it out into the city and then into the town. But I want to see a, an update, bi-monthly update, as this goes along, so that we can see the achievements of the students and the staff.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor of approving the Leader in Me Membership Agreement? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next is the BHS PE waiver. Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, this is the annual waiver that we have to submit to the Iowa Department of Education. It's, it's the exact same waiver we submit every single year, and it has mostly to do with the fact that we're on trimester schedules. So it's a, it's an annual waiver, so this particular waiver that you're approving tonight would be for the next school year. So we'd ask that you approve it as presented.
Is there a motion? Director Courtney, a second. Vice President McVeigh, any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We are running through these. Next is Board Policy 503.5, Corporal Punishment, Mechanical Restraint, and Prone Restraint. First reading, Mr. Johnson.
Yes, again, this is a new revision of Board Policy that we are proposing to you this evening. There has been, there have been changes to Iowa Code 281, Chapter 103, that have, that deal with the use of seclusion and restraint in school settings. So the updates to this Board Policy are the updates that are necessary due to those changes to code. So we'd ask that you present first reading as presented.
Is there a motion? Director Courtney, a second?
Second.
Director Hatterberg, discussion?
I think, is this, the language sounds pretty weird, but I'd just like to know what we're really approving here.
Yep, so the, the language is pretty direct in its, in its nature, but the, the general gist of it is, in Iowa Code, there are really three kind of pieces of this. One is corporal punishment. Corporal punishment is any sort of action taken by a school employee that's intended to cause harm. That's always illegal and never okay in the state of Iowa. There are actually some other states in the country where paddling is still legal. Paddling is an example of corporal punishment. Illegal in Iowa, always wrong. So that's part of what this code is, and that's based in law. The other two items are seclusion and restraint. So restraint is when a student is becoming physically aggressive, or a student who is, maybe, a lot of times, these are students who have special education needs or are identified as special education needs, who have difficulty controlling behaviors and have an IEP specific to that need. There were restraint portions, basically tell us what we can and what we cannot do as, as school employees to, to appropriately restrain the child. First and most important thing is training. As a district, we have adopted the nonviolent crisis intervention model for, for our training. We have two, on, we have two district employees who are the trainers for that program, so we do our own training in-house. And then there are, so there are certain techniques and certain pieces that are allowable when, when necessary, and there are certain things that are unallowable. For example, you're never allowed to use prone restraint, which is student face down. You're also never allowed to use mechanical restraints, which would be any device used to bind or tie, and those things like that are never allowed. And then there are also limitations, and processes and protocols that belong, and that's where a lot of the new law is. That piece really hasn't changed. What's changed is some processes and protocols and follow-up that are required, and that's more important part of Board Policy. Third piece, the seclusion piece, seclusion is sometimes called the timeout rooms or cooldown rooms, so when students placed, or when a student is melting, for lack of a better term, melting down, or having a very combative reaction. Again, typically, we're talking about students who have special education needs, who have behavioral needs, and it defines how and when and where, and under what conditions the, the seclusion spaces can be used. So it is very direct in the code. It is a little harsh looking when you read it, but it is the language by the code, and pretty much all the language that we're proposing to you is what's required.
Well, I guess I, I want, I was hoping that we were approving not using mechanical restraints and prone. I kept looking at that, I kept wondering, I didn't get a chance to read into it, but you've, you've answered those questions, so I appreciate that. This restraint thing's a big deal to me, and I think it probably is to the whole board, so it's something I think we got to really keep, keep an eye on. And I think you're doing that. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. We'll vote on Board Policy 503.5. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes for the first reading. Next is Board Policy 503.6, Physical Restraint and Seclusion of Students. The first reading, Mr. Johnson again.
Yep, so it's a, just a continuation of the 503.5 policy. So 503.5 existed before, and this is a revision, so 503.5 that you just approved is a revision of existing policy. 503.6 is a new policy that's recommended by the Iowa Association of School Boards, and what it really delves more into is some of those procedural things that I was mentioning before. So it has to do with time limits, the required parent contacts, required documentation, some of the newest requirements that are on school districts are, are in this 503.6 policy. So again, I'd ask that you approve it based on the, is there necessary based on changes to code?
Is there a motion?
Mr. President, I would move approval of the first reading of Board Policy 503.6.
Thank you, Director Courtney, a second?
Second.
Director Holson, any discussion? I have a question, Mr. Johnson. The policies outlined in here, how are they different than the policies we've been executing before this? Having this policy, how, how different are these versus what has been going on?
This particular portion actually is, has some pretty significant differences in it, and this policy did not exist in the past, the 503.6 portion. In the revision of Chapter 103, there were some procedural limits and safeguards put into place for school districts. So as an example, one of the procedural safeguards is that a seclusion or restraint cannot last for longer than 15 minutes. If it does last for longer than 15 minutes, the building administrator or their designee must give affirmative approval for the continuation of that, that either seclusion or restraint incident, that approval has to be documented. It's not about the paperwork, but kind of example-wise, we used to have a one-page form, now it's a four-page form. If that kind of, I mean, there's a lot more documentation focused on not just the incident occurred, but what led to the incident, what, how long the incident lasted, what was the follow-up with the incident. One of the other, there's also new requirements for timelines around parent notifications in this, and then there's also requirements for written documentation that's provided to parents, but then also require follow-up meetings that occur. If you're familiar with an IEP team, it's very similar to an IEP team meeting, in which there are required people that must attend the meeting. There is, again, a meeting form that must be completed to, again, where the, where the team is debriefing what led to the incident, how could that have been averted in future, what are, what are, what are changes that may need to be made to the student's plan to make it less likely for the, for this type of event to happen in the future? And if the student does have an IEP, and again, in most cases, this would be a student who would already have an IEP, who already has known behavioral concerns, are there any modifications or changes that need to be made in that IEP based on, based on new evidence? So this policy really includes those procedural pieces in some more detail again, and those are, that's really what, it's a change as it occurred. One of the other changes that's occurred in the code that will probably come back around later, is there are new requirements for the physical, I'll say, the physical requirements of the space that's used. All of our buildings, except for the high school, has, have built seclusion spaces in them. When we, when the buildings were rebuilt, they were built with the particular spaces, so they, they met the, they met the standard. The standards have changed, so, and I believe it's five years under the new code to bring those up to the new code, so we'll be working, we'll have some facilities changes that will occur as a result of this as well over the next few years to bring those spaces up to code.
Thank you. Yep.
I have a question. Is there any type of training that is required of our staff members to go along with this? I know there's a particular training class that's, that has taken place under the old policy. Is there one that's going to be taking place under this?
Yep.
As one of those safeguards?
Yeah, so there are two parts to the training. One is, we, one is a general, a more awareness and knowledge of Chapter 103 and the legal requirements. We train, and I say we, I work with Monica, her special education behavior coach, as Amanda, and Aaron, our two behavior, and the specialists, and Amanda and Aaron are the, also the two in our staff that are CPI trainers. The four of us presented last Friday, we had about 140-some staff, we trained last Friday, and that was on the code changes, procedural changes, and some of, and those updates. Those were all our special educators, or all that were available that day, we might have missed a few, but they'll have to do a makeup. A lot of our special education associates, those would be most likely to be in situations where they're working with students who have these identified needs. Our SROs, our counselors, our social workers, our outreach coordinators, all of those folks were expected to attend that training last Friday, and like I said, we had about 145, 46 people on that training. And so that's kind of the first piece, and that will be done online, available to the Department of Education. But as an initial training, with all these changes, we felt it was important that we do it locally, that we kind of keep it focused, and we make the connections to Burlington. The second piece of the training is that CPI training, CPI nonviolent justice intervention training, which is an annual, which, again, we have two trainers on staff, not, training that we, that we do. It is hybrid now with some module components, and they also practice the, the appropriate restraint goals and all the other pieces as well. I should mention that that training focuses more on de-escalating, than physical. I mean, that's, is in that sort of a situation, how do you de-escalate it, so it doesn't need to become physical? But if there is a need for, for physical restraint, the appropriate methods for doing that are also involved in that training. So we have ongoing training every year, most late, and that's probably the reason we did in-house trainers, because we're, you know, such a large district. They're doing training multiple times a year to get the people who are required to have that training, trade, and then annually, they have to be certified with a refresher.
Okay. Thank you very much for that explanation.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. We'll vote on Board Policy 503.6, First Reading of Physical Restraints and Seclusion of Students. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next is the SBRC Request for Additional Allowable Growth for At-Risk Dropout Program. Mr. Reynolds or Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Reynolds.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yeah, every year, we can submit a request to the School Budget Review Committee for allowable growth for our dropout prevention program, which is due January 15th. The request for this year is for property taxes of $910,124, which is a reduction of $15,285 from the previous year. The reason for that decline is the funding is all based upon number of students, so with our, our certified enrollment decline this year, the, the funding also follows. The way the application of the budget works is we can, the state will allow allowable growth up to 75% of the total budget, which is determined by our, our student funding, and then the other 25% is through local funds. So this program, when you look at it, does employ a significant number of employees in the district and provide very critical programs to the students. So when you look at the information that was presented to you, you can see it does fund our counselors, our mental health counselors, the outreach coordinators, social workers, five certified staff at the high school, the middle school, along with our resource officer, and our summer school programs, along with our, our Beadle software and those things. So it is a critical component of the district, so we are just asking for the board approval to submit the application of the SBRC for our dropout program.
Is there a motion for approval?
I motion that we approve the SBRC Request for Additional Allowable Growth for At-Risk Program.
Thank you, Vice President McVeigh, a second?
Second.
I think Director Holson got that one. Any discussion? So, one question then, just for clarification, Mr. Reynolds. This is about a 2% decrease in property taxes, of this line item of property taxes. Hopefully, as more students come back next year, we hope to be able to then make an increase again next year.
That would be correct, a correct statement, so.
Thank you. Any discussion, any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor of the SBRC Request for Additional Allowable Growth for At-Risk Dropout Program?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next, it's back to Mr. Reynolds for the Iowa Vocational Rehabilitation Services Contract Amendment.
Yes, this is a continuation of our Transition Alliance Program, which we commonly refer to as TAP. We have a contract with them, and this is for the extension of the program for one more year. The program is funded through, it's 50% funded by the state program, and then 50% funded by the local district with special ed funds. So we're asking the board to approve the contract with the budget of $108,008 for next year. As we noted before previously, you know, this high school program does provide tremendous services for the special education students at the high school. We have received recognition by the state for the success of our program, and it's used as a model for other schools in Iowa to follow. So if you want some more specifics, you know, I know Mr. Caden would be happy to talk about the program and, and what we do with it, so.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Director Hatterberg, a second? Director Courtney, discussion?
Mr. Reynolds, can you just clarify, is our portion $108,008, or that's the total, and we divide it by two?
Yeah, that's just, that's the total budget that we submit. It's, it's really kind of an estimate, but obviously, that would be the maximum budget. So it's 50% covered by the state, 50% with special education funds.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor for the Iowa Vocational Rehabilitation Services Contract Amendment? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next is the James Madison Property Discussion, and Mr. Reynolds, turn it over to you.
Yes, we've been reviewing some of the property at James Madison Elementary. The city with their sewer separation project is looking to build a water retention pond, and they've identified, you know, a portion of the land at James Madison that they would like to utilize for the building of that pond. So initial discussions, you know, happened a few years ago, they were looking at a smaller portion of the property. What they're currently looking at is building a larger retention pond, which is approximately 4.6 acres of land. So we've been in discussion with the city, looking at some options for either possibly outright purchasing of the land, or maybe some waiver of water fees for James Madison Elementary. So at this point, you know, looking at the, this current process of discussion, we would like to basically just bring it back to the Finance Committee for review and discussion. Oh, Mr. McGraw is here.
Good evening, School Board. So I, I just wanted to explain kind of what the, the request for the, the parcel at James Madison School is for. If, I think you can see the presentation there. We are planning to do about a $4.8 million project on Harrison Avenue, which will be a full-depth reconstruction and, and taking it to concrete. It will also involve some of our sewer separation work. For those of you that kind of understand what's going on, we have, the, the town was built on, on a system where we put both the flush water and the stormwater down the same line, and that is against what the EPA wishes and desires. So we've been out separating in the last 20 years. We still have a fair amount to separate. The, the area around Harrison Avenue still needs to be separated, and so some of the work that we are going to try and do is not step on our own toes by installing some new combination, or new separated lines, and then do a new roadway project. Well, we didn't know exactly where to take that stormwater to, and we thought, well, maybe we could take it south. Currently, it goes in a combined line to the north, but as you can see, we had a diagram that was kind of depicted, showing what that project would entail. And, and like Mr. Reynolds said, we didn't at the time, when I, you know, the city initiated the conversation, know kind of the size and parameters of what that retention pond would look like. So I have that in the next slide in front of you. This is a, an aerial with the acquisition plat and showing what that retention pond would look like. It is further west than I would like it to be, but because geograph, well, topographical issues, it needs to be that way to be able to handle that volume. So the, the acquisition that we would put forth would be to acquire this land, to be able to take the stormwater through to the south. The, the proposal that I had sent forward to Mr. Reynolds and Mr. Cohen was a 10-year waiver on the stormwater utility. As you can see in front of you, you currently pay $110 a month in ERU, or the equivalently, equivalent residential unit. So you pay $110 a month, roughly $1,200 a year, so that would have equated to about $17,000 in, in the 10-year value. In, in my opinion, the, the real value was the, the potential for the future development. We were, we were going to allow the sale of the property for a future developer to tie in their stormwater retention into the pond that we're, that we're creating. We, we sized it for that. And, and the value of that pond is when a developer to come through, they would be required by code to install their own retention. To do a pond of size, they would be between $50,000 and $75,000, so quite a bit of saving, plus they're able to sell a lot, normally would have had to burn for that stormwater retention. So the value, when I sent the proposal, was kind of on the back end more than it was on the front end. The one thing I didn't know was timeframe of which the development would occur, or what the time period for, you know, Madison being still on its location. Oh, it doesn't matter. So from the council meeting, I just left City Council not that long ago. The thing that we, I took away from that was that I was going to hire an appraiser to go out and appraise the property, to see what the market value is on that property. And between the, a combination of where the ERU savings could be, and in a cash offer, something like that, that's kind of where we arrived at. So I know I'm kind of trying to be an intermediary between the two organizations, but ultimately, it's highly important for us to be able to get this accomplished, because we have a pretty good-sized project that's pretty good on some design plans, that stormwater retention there. So I think it could fit really well, and really, the land to the east isn't used a whole lot, and I knew that it would encroach upon some of the areas the developer had seen its value to build some homes. So I don't really know what to do with this conversation, other than kind of just give the spiel on what we were wanting from the school district on that. And I know that we, I have some marching orders from my city council to move forward, so.
I'd just like to add that the school, you know, and the city have had great working relationships, and we will continue to work with the city. We realize the importance of this to their project, and I'm sure we'll come to some agreeable solution for the utilization of the city in this project.
Mr. McGregor, what's the city's timeframe of needing to acquire the property for the Harrison work?
So we have, we have plans and specs that will be going out here within the next month. So to have that property acquired by, I would say, May 1 would be pretty important, and I know that that's a pretty compressed timeframe, given the public hearings that each entity would have to go through. And getting an appraisal done probably in this timeframe isn't, isn't going to happen overnight. But the biggest thing that, of importance, is you may have seen a notice go out for tree clearing on Harrison Avenue. It's related to this project because of the Indiana bat migration. We're required by April 1 to do any tree clearing. Did I say Indiana bat? Yeah. We have to, we have to clean out the, clear the trees prior to their migration, and so that would be the timeframe, is an April 1 timeframe. But we wouldn't necessarily need the acquisition of that property, as long as we had permission and a knowledge that we would be able to do that type of process.
To clear the trees that are on.
Correct. That is part of the tree clearing, the clearing on the James Madison School ground.
What other questions do we have for Mr. Reynolds, Mr. McGregor?
I have a question. You keep talking about a developer. So are you aware of a developer that's going to be developing that?
Maybe I spoke out of turn. I apologize if I did.
Back to that. We had Lacy, the gentleman from Minneapolis, who uses hay rack for homecoming. We had Nate Larson from Stefis Auction, come walk the land, did all the measurements with the building, and this was prior to, during rightsizing, pre-COVID, it seemed so long ago. It actually priced out how much we'd be able to sell that land for. He saw it being very desirable, close to a park. You know, there were so many reasons to tear that building down, build houses, get the houses on the tax roll, and start driving our property valuation up, so we can drive our taxpayers' taxes down. You know, it's a strange thing, the lower valuation a city has, the higher the taxes to pay for the schools and the sewers and, you know, all these things. So yes, we did have a gentleman come look at it. Yes, he did count the number of lots, you know, those type of things, and gave us a swag. And what he did, though, his job was more to advertise it, and then bring in developers from across the country, the Midwest, you know, try to develop it into a housing area. And then, when we walked it the first time, they didn't need that big of a piece. But I also understand why they do need that big of a piece, because the engineers did the watershed calculations, and that's what they need. At the time, it was a swag. And that's when we said, we are, because really, the city and the burly schools are twin sisters. All the people that pay taxes pay for the school and the city, and we wanted to try to work together. But at the same time, you know, to Greg's point. So it is a tough question for the board.
Thank you for that explanation, Mr. Cohen.
Yeah, it was kind of windy, but.
So at this point, I would assume that we don't have a motion for approval tonight in terms of a sale contract, or that at this point that we want to continue to discuss. I would assume that this, when that comes, would go through the Facilities Committee. They would finish, or, you know, continue to negotiate, and then at that point, come back with a price or agreement, sale agreement for approval from the board. One point we do need to do, though, in relation to this, is both entities, assuming we would move ahead with a purchase agreement, both entities at this point use the same law firm for work. We just need to approve this letter, in essence waiving our rights for conflict of interest. We don't imagine there would be, they're just going to be drawing up paperwork for both sides. If at any time we want to revoke this, we can instantly, but we would need board approval for the conflict, conflict of interest waiver. So I would accept a motion to approve this letter. I'm happy to read it. It has not been circulated. It's part of the same conversation, though. It's all related to the, to the James Madison property. That's with this letter. Well, me. This just says James Madison property, I guess, on the main agenda. Yeah, I guess on this part. Well, I guess, where does it say discussion only? Mr. Courtney, Director Courtney? Oh, that's the recommended action. We're always able, if it's on the agenda, to take action. If we saw fit to, okay. Mr. Reynolds, is that something that would need tonight, or is that something that we can go two weeks on, understanding the timeframe that we discussed?
I think we could all, maybe read the letter.
Yeah, I think obviously, since the attorneys are working with the city, they are not currently doing any work with the school district on this, but since it's the same firm, represents both parties, they would just like acknowledgement that, you know, there is a potential conflict of interest, but they do not believe that there is regarding this project at this point. So obviously, the sooner they have it, the better. That way, they can move forward working with the city. Just a footnote along with the sale of the property, we listed as an action item regards to the sale of properties. We didn't anticipate having any kind of contract with the city. Also, just remember, as far as the formal processes for the sale of real estate, you know, there is a process that the school has to follow. So but once we come to some type of agreement regarding a contract, then we have to publish a public hearing and follow the public hearing processes before the actual sale could occur. So just, just a reminder to the board that, you know, there are some steps that we will need to follow through before the sale of this property, so.
That would be my interpretation of it. Okay. As I understand it, is, that's the recommended. Just like, there's times that it might be on here that the, Greg recommends us to do something, but we don't do that. We may vote it down. You know, that's just, in essence, the staff recommendation of, of action that they're recommending us to take, but as a board, we can at any time take that action, not take that action, take other action as it relates to that agenda item. I think it would be, if we tried to get too far off, that's where we would, we would look at a point of order or something if it's, if it's not related. What's that?
And just as.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. This is.
Director Seer noted with this agreement, you know, that this right here is no conflict. At some point through the process, we determine that there is a potential conflict in the representation, this agreement can be rescinded. We just sent notice to Lynch, Dallas, that we are rescinding this agreement.
As everyone's reading this, Mr. McGregor, I will, I will walk through the seven habits that all of our students will now be learning. Thank you for being proactive and talking about this with us. We know you're going to end up with the property. We just need to really go into that win-win solution for both organizations of how we get that done. But I think, without a formal vote or anything, I think, as Mr. Cohen mentioned, we don't want to hold up your entire sewer project. I know the millions that would be if this wasn't something that would end up. Director Vikström?
Is there a typo at the bottom that says "by singing" below?
Yeah, I was gonna encourage all of you to join in on that.
I was thrown out of a church choir that needed people. I'm not going to sing anything.
To you, I guess I could sing it if you really wanted to torture yourselves.
I don't think it materially changes this, but it'd probably be nice to have it updated.
If I may, I don't want to speak out of turn, but City Council is approving the same waiver. We just do it a little bit different. We, our council meeting is next week, so it was on the work session agenda tonight, so they'll prove it next week. I am being presumptuous.
Any discussion? Any motion?
Well, I'll make, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and sign this. Is that what you want? Yeah.
Yeah. There's motion on the table to approve the conflict waiver. Is there a second?
Second.
Director Holden, any discussion on the, the motion?
I know this is not the normal, as we're being pointed out, it does say recommended action, only, but in light of the situation that we're experiencing, I think this is a key component in moving forward. I feel that we would have the process. I think this, as we're agreeing to selling properties, I think that it is just one of the very first actions to take place in order to continue, and I'd like our Facilities Committee to make a recommendation for. Thank you.
No, and thank you. I guess I will just, on that, on that point of order, I've always assumed, as it's been explained to me, or as I've learned, it was the opposite, that is, the discussion item that's on the agenda is the discussion item, the recommended action from the staff, what was just recommended. We can take any different action, but we're only allowed to discuss what's under the umbrella of the subject on here. And now, that's a gray area, but that's kind of up to the discretion of what is allowed or what isn't, based on that. Does that make any sense, what I said?
I'm kind of in agreement with Mr. Courtney. When it says discussion only, I come to the meeting thinking, we're just discussing this tonight. We're not going to make any decisions, we're just discussing it. Now, this letter is kind of like an aside. It isn't directly related to the actual purchasing of the property. It's, it is because we have to take care of this conflict, that the same firm is representing both sides. So I guess in my mind, I was thinking, well, this is just kind of separate. It probably should have been an item on the agenda tonight, that it, action item, that we needed to approve it, but it's kind of a matter of future, and not so much a decision of spending money or anything. And, and we can always say, oh, this isn't working, we don't want to do this anymore at any point. So I don't know. I just thought it was kind of a separate thing. It probably should have been on the agenda.
I agree.
I, I think, Mr. President, when you come right down to it, you probably don't need board approval to sign this. You probably don't. That's my, that's, the way the letter looks, you don't actually need board approval to sign that letter. You sign things all the time, presidents always do, that they don't get board approval. You probably don't. I've dragged this out way farther than I meant.
No, I think it's a good conversation just for procedure, a good conversation to have, not, I don't know if anyone disagrees with the letter, but just for procedural, moving ahead, what line of duty we have versus the posted agenda versus not. I would say the option would be, we vote tonight, move it ahead, and we understand there's gray area under each, or we table this in the next meeting. We would, instead of being a week ahead of the City Council, be a week behind. As Mr. Reynolds mentioned, we're not in active working with them now. The law firm would like it. We table it, and we bring it up then, when it's been posted.
I think you have a motion and second on the floor this time. I just.
We do.
I just go with it. Yeah, I just go with that. I just go with that.
Yep.
That's what I do.
Any further discussion? On this? Seeing none, all in favor of the conflict waiver for Lynch, Dallas, PC? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Any further discussion as it relates to the James Madison property? Seeing none, we will move on to Board Policy 903.8, District Operations During a Public Health Emergency Amendment, First Reading. Mr. Johnson?
Yes, as you will recall, on the 4th of December, we did do an emergency board policy 903.8A in order to expand some of the mask requirements and have them be in effect immediately. And so this really is just taking that emergency policy and amending 903.8, District Operations During a Public Health Emergency with those expanded mask requirements that we all had talked about then. So the recommended action would be to approve the first reading of the amended board policy 903.8 as presented.
Thank you. Your motion?
I make a motion to approve Board Policy 903.8.
Director Courtney, motion by Vice President McVeigh. Discussion?
I am just asking for clarification now that this policy. I am just asking for clarification now that this policy has been in effect for a few months. We're starting to see some minor issues with it. I think when it comes to sports, so, and ban maybe. So I just would like to clarify that the, the policy is put into place that if you are on the sidelines during a sporting event, if you are a player, you are to wear a mask. Is that, am I correct in that? While you are playing, you are not required to wear a mask. Am I correct?
That is correct per Mr. Huff, who is sitting right next to me. And I am happy to move the camera so you can see Mr. Huff. But yeah.
Yes, that's correct. Our expectations, our kids are masked all the time. They except of course, when like in, they're in the swimming pool or wrestling, face, you know, on the basketball court. Our expectation is they have their masks on anytime they're not in the game. And in like our, or in at practice, anytime they're doing anything that allows them to wear the mask. So, but yeah, that's our expectation.
So even while practicing, if they are on the sidelines per se, they should be wearing a mask. But if they're running down the field, they are not required to wear a mask at that time.
But some do. I mean, you'll, when we play, I mean, some kids will wear their, wear their mask, choose to wear their mask while they're in the game. We had that in volleyball as well. I know as we got later on in the season, our girls volleyball team wore their masks every, all the time during the game. So, yeah, that's the expectation.
Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate it. That's all I have.
Further discussion? Seeing none, vote on Board Policy 903.8, District Operations During a Public Health Emergency. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed and in line? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Next, we will, next on the agenda is the F and M Bank. And I will just turn, turn this over to Mr. Courtney, President McVeigh, and or Mr. Cohen, just to kind of summarize the meeting. And Director Holden was at the, were you, were you, no, were you on the call? You were on the call, but not at the in-person meeting. So anybody that was on the meeting call, or anybody that was at the in-person meeting on Saturday, just to kind of say where we're at, Mr. Cohen kind of gave it a summary in his report.
So I can go ahead and start with that. The phone call that we had in the, it was like potentially had been against us. That they are, a lot of more progress going on. And then on Saturday, I was lucky enough to be invited by the Vice President of the Political Act Leadership Council, Mr. Lewis. And at that moment, Ms. Lisa Walsh showed up. She gave a speech. And then in further discussion, there was very positive. And so I'm very pleased to see that at this time of the regulation, Reverend Brown was for the Arlington School District to table this, allow them more time to have a discussion. Discussion appeared between F and M Bank and the Arlington Act Leadership Council. So progress was met, I believe, from what I saw at that time Saturday. And that I don't have to, anyone else can add to it. But I was very pleased as a member of the committee to see it all coming together and the positivity of the outcomes that's potentially there.
I could, if I could, Mr. President. I have to agree with, with Vice President McVeigh. I was, I was impressed with the apology that Ms. Walsh gave. I think it was heartfelt. I think the community that was in the building took it, took it to heart. And I think I'm willing to, from my point of view, I'm willing for the board to table this. I think it's already been tabled, but to wait and let that community work it out. They seem like they want to work it out. I think it would, it's really not our place to, to get away with that if they won't work it out. So I, like I say, I'm not willing to put it away yet, but I am willing to wait and see what happens. And I think, I think they've got a real good shot at making something happen. She really, she really was truthful and heartfelt, I thought, in her apologies. So thank you, Mr. President.
Director Holden? I have nothing else to add. I think you two summarized it very well.
A comment and a suggestion. In the times that we have, it's refreshing to see somebody that can forgive. These people, I think, are better Christians than I am. Okay, at this point. The other, the other part of suggestion I have is that I think it would be helpful for Ms. Walsh to periodically make reports back to this group on what's actually happening in a formal setting. That way they can see what's going on. She can surprise people of her situation and how things are going as opposed to do one time and then go on from there. And hopefully it isn't one time. But I would suggest that there is a regular meeting between groups. So I can't make a motion. Obviously, that's a suggestion.
Director Heffron?
I'm just very pleased as, as how things are progressing. And I'm proud of our district for facilitating some of these people getting together. And I think that's what, you know, as an educator, that's what we all, we all want the best for, for our students. We want them to grow. We want them to be good community people. And I just, I'm proud of the district for the part that we have played in this. And now I'm very pleased that it's gone on to the next level and we're kind of out of it, so.
Thank you. I would say that, I'd give a lot of credit to Mr. Cohen for organizing and taking a very active leadership role and by being. Thank you, Mr. Cohen, for, for your help in getting us into action. If, is there a motion on this or will we let this one die with, for lack of a word?
Mr. President, has it been tabled before this issue?
It was tabled.
Is it still tabled then? So we can just leave it, we can just leave it lie there.
Absolutely. Unless there's a motion to pull it off the table, it sits there forever and dies.
I have to say, I went into this, my opinion changed. I did a 180 Saturday on my opinion. And Reverend Brown said, I don't, I don't think he'd mind me saying, one of the first things Reverend Brown said was, I forgive you. And if he can forgive her and they can forgive her, I sure can. So I think it's something we should sit on, just wait, leave it on the table unless somebody wants to take it off and see where we go. But I got a lot of letters on this. I got a ton of emails. I'm sure you all did. I got just emails everywhere, all different opinions on it. And I think if everybody could have been in that room and heard what went on there, I think they would have changed their minds too. So thank you.
Yeah, procedurally, we would need a motion to take it off the table. If that motion doesn't exist, at any time, we could add it back to the agenda and take it off the table at that time. But is there a motion tonight? Seeing none, we will die in time for lack of motion. Moving on then to Board Communications. And so, Ms. Kent, we don't only have this much, 15 items on here, so. Thank you for coming. Anything else you'd like to add after sitting, sitting through the meeting here? We'll start with you. Well, great. We'll take it. Director Holden?
I just want to remind everyone to do the mitigation procedures to help us get COVID under control and to get vaccinated when you are given that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Vikström? Director Vikström?
Again, a comment about what's happening now. I think the schools can have a big part in maybe, I don't want to say re-educate, but get us back to considering what's important in this country and how we can get along and how we have to get along. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Director Huff?
I would just like to say welcome to J A 2 because I had the pleasure of being her teacher for a few years. And she is a wonderful young lady. So we're real pleased to have you here. And I think that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Vice President McVeigh?
Just want to tell everyone, welcome back. Glad to see everybody back in school. And it sounds like things are moving along well. It's great to hear voices in the hallway. It's great to hear cheering and chanting on the courts and in the, in the swim, for the swimming. It's just, it's nice to try to get some normalcy going for these students. I also want to say, as a district, I think we are being very proactive in a lot of things within our community. And I think that is huge for us in this day and age to be more proactive instead of reactive. And I think that will really help our students also realize how important it is to be proactive. And I just appreciate everyone's involvement in our district. Have a wonderful week.
Thank you. For me, I want to echo what Director Holson said about mitigation strategies. I am a big Iowa State football fan and I want to go watch them in person next fall. So everyone needs to wear their masks so I can do that. In terms of the giveaways from the meeting tonight, war taxes, it's not a lot, but it's, it's at least something on there. I am wildly, wildly, wildly excited about the Leader in Me program. I think it's going to be fantastic. I was thrilled to hear, and I, and I will want to hear more in the future, on adding in the employability standards to our students' report cards. I think that's something from a board level, we're going to be able to track of how many students are employable at this level. And then in five years, see that number grow. That's going to be, I'm absolutely ecstatic for it. I love the seven habits, joking, I referred to them earlier in that. But seeing that come through here with the, the F and M situation of truly finding that win-win, instead of going for a win-loss, which is where that, that situation easily could have ended up in. And so I am thrilled for that, for the fifth graders through 12th graders getting to get that exposure and, and the benefit to the students, the community and the district. So with that, I will look for a motion for recess. So we can go into Superintendent Valuation. Director Courtney?
I.
Well, it's 7:45. What does everybody think? Or do we want to?
I don't care.
I was thinking.
I'll send home by nine.
What does everybody think? Show of hands unofficially, who wants to do it now or who wants to?
Well, you have to say one at a time. Get it over with.
All right. I will, rather than, we'll rescind that motion for recess instead of motion for adjournment. Motion adjourned second. Someone's going to second.
I'll second.
We adjourn for, until our next meeting. Thank you.